Hello and welcome to CCC News. I'm Robyn Denning. Today, I'm introducing councillor Dan Richardson. He's a lifelong Wasco County resident and a candidate for Wasco County Commissioner. Welcome to the show.
Good morning, Robyn. Thanks for having me on.
It's good to have you. Tell me about yourself and your background, Dan.
Personally, I grew up in the Dalles and graduated here. My wife and I graduated, went away to some school and moved around a little bit with our early working life. And we returned here about 21 years ago to raise our family. We have four generations of Richardsons now, so I think we are dug in pretty deep to the city, to the county professionally. My last 12 or 15 years has been working at a soil and water conservation district, which is a sort of government district, kind of like an extension agent, where we work with residents and small landowners. We work with residents and small landowners on natural resource issues, which is sort of government speak for what are the landscape and the resources around you? So I work in Clickitat County, Inscimania County, and some of our areas are focused there are reducing wildfire hazard, salmon-bearing, healthy streams. That's a big issue over there. And small-scale landowners and non-commercial forestry.
Cool.
So trees, water, and fire.
Cool. So you're running for Wasco County Commissioner.
Yes.
Tell me about the platform that you're running on and the issues that are important to you in this race.
Well, that's a great question. I'm going to flip it around and say, what are the issues that people in Wasco County tell me are important to them? So I've been making a real effort to go around the county this past six months as I have gotten into this job application essentially to this campaign. And I've been speaking with people in Mopin and Mozier and Doofur and Tai Valley and all the other communities, rural communities, and as well as the Dalles, of course. And despite the very big size of Wasco County and the diversity in the communities and their different character, there are some common concerns and common themes. Things like wildfire hazard, which is becoming an increasing risk to every community, including the Dalles, which has been singed on the outskirts repeatedly and increasingly in the last few years. Things like water supply and very expensive water system upgrades, which every community in Wasco County is facing right now. And things like a lack of housing, especially for young and working and then elderly. So people on both ends of the age spectrum are having a real trouble finding houses that they can afford, finding a place to live, either to rent or to own. Things have changed. You know, I bought a house, my wife and I bought a house in the Dalles 21 years ago. And before that, my parents bought a house and that is just the normal course of events. Working people could buy a house. They could find a place to live. And conditions have changed. That is just much harder. It's very hard for young people. I don't know that many 25-year-olds, but a few. And they are all stressed about finding, or if they have found a place to rent, about keeping a roof over their heads. And that is not an area of work the county has traditionally been engaged in. But when conditions change for a very large number of residents, then government needs to adapt. And that's true of our cities, specifically the city of the Dalles. And it's true of our county. And we need to get beyond a sense of, we don't do that, and come to the table and say, what can we do as local government to support or incentivize housing for our people?
Yeah, I mean, last night at the North Wasco School Board meeting, there was a public comment from a teacher aged 29, almost 30, who, you know, went to school to get an associate's degree in teaching, has student loan. And here he is turning 30, in a professional career that we value as from a community greatly, but can't buy a house. And he's stuck in rental world, which is still very difficult as well. And that was his testimony at the school last night. And so, yeah, I hear that echoed in these constituents.
Absolutely. You can hear that in the Dalles. You can hear that in Mopin, Doofur, Mozier even. Yes, it's very difficult. Local government is not going to solve that problem, in part because it's a problem that is around the West and around the entire country. But what we can do is start asking the question, what can we do in our little corner of the world to incentivize housing, you know, maybe modest-scale housing for working people?
Yeah.
And the answer is not, we can't do anything. I don't accept that. The answer is, we can do something. I have a few ideas. And the time is right to be having this conversation, not just because the need is here, but also because both the city of the Dalles and Wasco County have some funds, some discretionary funds, that we need to think about investing properly and wisely. But also, the city of the Dalles is going through a housing production strategy. So the conversation will be very live very soon. And it's incumbent, in my opinion, for county commissioners to be at the table there.
So obviously, though these issues are different in the different parts of the county, you know, from Mozier all the way to South County, places like Mopin and all the rural areas in between, some of these issues vary differently. And some of them are, we share as people that live in this county. Can you talk to the variation in some of these issues in terms of the diversity of the folks that live in Wasco County?
Oh, that's a great question. Yes, Wasco County is very diverse, in part because it's very large, right? If you start at the upper northwest corner, basically right next to Chicken Charlie Island and drive to the bottom of Cow Canyon and the far southeast corner there along 97, you see a real range in topography and the kinds of landscapes, and even in sort of living conditions of people, right? Communities are very distinct. Mopin is not Doofur and Tai Valley is not Pine Hollow. Even though they're close, they're very distinct communities. That said, I'm going to challenge you a little bit in the sense that there's great variation in some of the challenges, because one thing I've been struck by is, though the communities are distinct, some of the challenges are common or universal across the communities. One is, outside the Dalles, is finding volunteers to staff critical fire and emergency services. Those are mostly volunteer. And I will say, it's even a little bit of a challenge in the Dalles, where we pay for professional services. So just finding people to step up and do that critical work is hard across every community. I don't think I've run into any community that says, we have fully staffed our ambulance and fire services. So that's universal. Another one, as I mentioned earlier, is an increasing exposure or threat from wildfires. And you know, as climate change is underway and messes with our traditional or historic seasonality, that makes wildfire season more erratic and wildfires more unpredictable. And every community is, or has been, or soon will be, seeing wildfire on their doorstep. You can see, until recently, you could see the pink hillsides around Mopin, where they dropped the fire retardant from a fire a couple of years ago. There are burn scars on the outskirts of Mozier, where there were fires recently. Doofur and their volunteers respond to fires pretty regularly on the outskirts. And the Dalles has also been singed on its perimeter. So if you live in the heart of the city, you're not at much risk, obviously. But if you live out and about, or if you live on the edges, you are increasingly exposed to that. So that's another common concern. So housing, staffing of emergency services, and those volunteers that are really critical to rural areas, wildfire, and water. Again, across Wasco County, every community is thinking about struggling with either water supply or some expensive water system upgrades. And I think that's true for every single community. Traditionally, that's not an area of work for the county, right? We say, that's not our job. You have an incorporated city. You have to take care of it. Or that's on your community to figure out, or your water district, which is true. That's historically true. It's technically true. I guess I would argue as a county commissioner that if a large number of our people, our neighbours, are suffering from the same stress or challenge, then the county commission and the county government needs to be in that conversation. And I think there might be some very prudent and reasonable ways for the county government to help out. We might, for instance, for very reasonable cost, within our financial means, hire someone, perhaps through the Regional Economic Development District, someone that looks for and administers grants for water systems. Because a small community doesn't face just a big bill. Often, their first thought is, well, we'll try and find a grant. Well, that's time-consuming. It's challenging. It's doable, but it's hard. And then if you land a big grant, a state grant or a federal grant, they're very burdensome to administer. And we could have some professional staff lend help to a lot of our neighbours in Wasco County for, I think, a very modest cost.
Yeah, I mean, the county also has its organisation that it works with for funding things, the Mid-Columbia Economic Development District too. And so benefiting, what I'm hearing you say is that folks can, and cities, can benefit from the administration support that the county kind of has and could invest in.
Absolutely. And look, local government is not going to solve every problem.
Sure.
But if the problem's big enough, local government needs to be at the table and in the conversation, whether it's wildfire, water, water systems, housing. There are some big things that people just need us to be engaged with and see what we might be able to do to lessen the impact or improve their quality of life. And sometimes it's going to be, we can't do much. But sometimes, local government can really make a difference.
Have the city and county, I would say county, but feel free to elaborate. Have they got money to help some of these issues?
Sure, that's a good question. Yes, is the short answer. Yes, we do. Both our city of the Dalles and the county of Wasco County have some discretionary funds. And again, we can't do everything. You know, we can't pay for everything. We can't just build a new high school. But we can do just about anything. We can do anything. We can't do everything. One area of funds, of course, is from Google. And that is not a big wave of money. It's not a tsunami of money. It's a stream of money. The exact amount is to be determined as they build their two new data centers and is become assessed. So we don't have an exact number. But you can think of it as something on the order of $1 or $2 million a year for the next 20, 25 years for both city and county. And one of my goals at the city over the last couple of years has been to work us through a process that's transparent and thoughtful about how to use those funds, so that it doesn't just go into a general fund or just kind of evaporate over, but to use it on purpose and to use it for some project or set of projects that are durable and high-value. And that would be one of my goals if elected to the county commission. They have the same need. We need to use our Google money on purpose, transparently. And that has just not been hashed out yet.
Do you have anything, this is off track a little bit, but do you have any response to the people that say, there's a value in investing that money in a fund that revolves and grows versus spending that money down? Since, you know, when we get state and federal dollars, it's really important, you have to spend those money down, otherwise you have to give them back, right? And so there's no real opportunity for cumulative and ongoing investing with state and federal and dollars and tax money, right? We shouldn't be trying to do that with basic tax dollars. But when it comes to the Google money, there's kind of this unique and unprecedented opportunity to invest in funds that would, you know, pay 5% or 6% on some of this money. And over an immediate term, that's pretty minimal. But over a long term, it has potentially a really, really strong impact on the ongoing financial future.
Well, that's an interesting idea. You're right, this is a somewhat unique opportunity. And so it's important, as I've said before, to set out a process to allocate and spend that money transparently and thoughtfully. And one reason to do so in a way that's transparent or public, or at least that the public understands, is that we could bring more bright people into the conversation. You know, we're a small town. We're a small community, even Wasco County. But all together, we're 27,000 people. We're a small community. We have to activate and include as many of the thoughtful and smart people as possible. And that means people with a variety of backgrounds. And folks might come up that have some stronger financial sophistication, might come up with some really interesting ideas, like a revolving loan fund, you know, a local development bank. And I'm excited about having that conversation. It's really critical for us. And we need to be able to think together, put our heads together at the city and at the county, and say, what is it that's really important to do with this essentially one-time stream of money?
Yeah, I mean, they've been able to do that most of the exact thing with the Oregon Investment Board, which is administered by Mid-Columbia Economic Development District, where they give these small business loans to businesses. And then with the repayment, then offer more loans and it goes around in a circle. And the money originally came from, I forget, but it was legislation, a federal legislation that that started with. And it's been able to, instead of helping three or four small businesses with kind of lump sums, the fact that it's been revolved and used in this way has allowed it to help 10 or 15 small businesses become medium-sized businesses. Places like Caserel Mirador that we really like, places like Anisinnhood River County, oh, places like Terracotta Downtown, the Dalles, you know, have really benefited from these programs. And so I see examples of this working in our community. And so that's kind of where the question comes from. But moving to the next, moving forwards, this is a political race, unfortunately. And I don't want to get too messy in the weeds. I don't want to bring ideas of a culture war into this conversation or upon our community, as I find them mostly divisive. But tell me about your leanings and how you see politics intersect with local government in a way through the decision-making and through the policymaking that you guys do.
Sure. That's a great question. It really goes to the heart of what are we about in local government? And look, most people, when you say politics, most people think to the media they consume and maybe their political party. And I get asked that, right? What party do you belong to? And then I say, the truth. I'm a Democrat. That makes most sense, in my view, for our national conversation. That's right now, that's the party that's the most reasonable and the most sort of focused on liberty and success for everybody. It makes much less sense, and in fact, is really not appropriate in local government, because these are nonpartisan positions. And we're fortunate, they should be, nonpartisan positions. In Wasco County, very roughly, the numbers of registered voters go something like 1/3 Republican, 1/3 Democrat, 1/3 non-affiliated. So if a candidate comes out and leans too heavily into their personal political affiliation or prejudices, or they are essentially writing off half or 2/3 of their neighbours. So I really try to encourage people to be mindful of that. Local government is by neighbours, for neighbours. And that's something that's both a fact and something that I think elected people need to constantly bear in mind. So how do most people interact with local governments? Planning or zoning or it's emergency services, right? We had an issue the other day and I had to call on a police response just to come and get a little bit of help. Police fire ambulance, the guy with the snowplow during the snowstorm. They don't check your political affiliation. They just show up and take care of business. And that's local government. And it should have, it should be that same way. And local elected officials should have that same get-it-done, pragmatic and neighbourly sense when they're discussing policies and budgets. And I do.
Cool.
It's not always that way. There are occasionally elected folks that I've observed that put their political prejudices or political affiliations first and see a local issue through that lens. And I think this is right. I'm thinking back. But I think it's accurate to say, every time I've seen that, they have made poorer decisions. Their judgment has been compromised. When they're thinking about their buddies, or their political party, or their affiliation, or their received prejudice, or whatever, however you want to put it. Good decisions tend to get made when local candidates and local electeds look at issues through the lens of what's best for the whole community and how do they do right by their neighbours that they have been elected to represent?
Yeah, I mean, there is certainly, we have, the voting record of this county follows that. There are certainly some examples of some Wasco County Commissioner incumbents doing some fringe activities and being unseated after those things. And so I think the historical context does apply to that. So, but you have been city councillor for, how long have you been councillor?
Yeah, about three and a half years.
So we should move to your voting record there, if it's a good pivot, feels like it is. I understand that makes you win a minority. There's a bit of a field of candidates here, running for this race. And there's some variations in the experience level of the field of candidates.
I think that's fair. There are five candidates for Wasco County Commissioner for one seat this election. And only two of us have had local elected experience.
Yeah.
Which is not the only kind of value that a candidate brings, but it is definitely one significant area of value, especially for county commission, which deals with, it's the umbrella government for the whole county. It's sort of the top job locally for local elected government. And I would say, having some experience in other boards and committees and being elected to maybe a role that's not quite as in the spotlight is really valuable. And I have that.
Yeah, I mean, so let's put that into, that question into a form of an issue, because I think that would be helpful for folks.
Yeah, sure.
This issue is less about your voting record and more about that it was a pretty, it's a pretty hot issue on the city council recently, and that's the reason we're bringing it. And that's the Meadow Outdoor.
The Billboards question.
The billboard, excuse me.
Yeah, that's all right.
For the buzz marketing there, Meadow. It's a billboard issue. And it was a difference in the city code. You could probably explain some of the things. But tell me about how you created consensus there and used your experience to create that consensus.
Oh, well, that's a great question. I guess I'm going to push back a little bit. We ended up voting 5-0 in that issue. So it was technically consensus, but I think each of the councillors struggled with it individually. And we make decisions in conversation in public. So it's always a little bit of a high-wire act, right? We don't come into an issue having decided ahead of time. We have to decide it in public. And look, it's harder to do that just as a human being when there's a roomful of people that are emotional or invested or upset or what have you. But that's the job. In the case of Meadow, as I said at the time in public, you know, there's a lot of grey area. It's a matter of some interpretation. And there's two, what seem like reasonable interpretations. And when there is a dispute that has a lot of grey area, ultimately, government has to sort of rule on the side of the citizens, or the side of the subject. It's our responsibility to make the rules and the process clear.
Yeah, thanks. That's good. So let's do, let's work through another decision. So we're here, and we'll put a different timeline on this one, because sometimes we don't necessarily always understand the impact of decisions when we make them. But that's the beauty of hindsight is 2020, right?
Absolutely.
Come up in my other interview for sure. But we're here, we're about a year on from the decision, from the annex decision in the Dalles. That was another issue that created lots of conversation interest.
Yes, I do need to correct you on that.
Please do.
The annex was not a decision. It was not a city decision. It was not a city issue. It was entirely a private property decision, though funded with state dollars. So people properly came to express their concerns about it to city council. But we did not have authority. We did not make a decision. It was not in our, it was not under our purview.
Sure, yeah, that is a helpful clarification. Thank you, Dan.
I don't mind taking responsibility for decisions I've made that people don't agree with, because obviously, when you elect people, you are electing human beings who are flawed. You try and get the best people, who have the most qualifications and skillsets and work ethic and that sort of thing. But they're still human beings. So we have some decisions that have unintended consequences. And that requires humility. The annex was not a decision, yeah.
Yeah, and you don't know what you don't know, right? And that's not, and that's not exclusive to elected people or not-elected people, right? But we've seen the, we've seen the annex operating really successfully in the Dalles now for about a year. We're about to also see the Gloria Center, their grand opening at the end of next month, both run by Mid-Columbia Community Action Council. And while Mid-Columbia Community Action Council has been in our community for a long time, this new energy has been fastidious about moving forwards in ways that alleviate this challenge of housing and accessing support services. How do you see the impact of the annex in our communities?
Sure, let me ask the question, or answer the question in a couple of parts here. Generally, we're on a broader, broader range. Having MACAC, Mid-Columbia Community Action Council, MACAC, having MACAC in our community is just a huge benefit to us. They have energetic leadership, vision, good people. They're well-connected and have been very successful in finding funding, state funding, much of the time. That's a huge benefit to us. It's hard for people, myself included, obviously. It's hard for people to see when some harm has been reduced, some hurtful thing has been reduced. And MACAC has been really successful in reducing the number of our neighbours who are houseless. They haven't reduced it to zero. It's a very big issue. But if you look around this last year, there's many fewer folks that are camping and houseless and experiencing that state. And also, obviously, concerning a number of people with like the disruption and the mess that often accompanies that. No, annex specifically and MACAC generally have been just a blessing to our community, honestly. And I encourage people of all backgrounds to take a walk downtown and walk around and walk by the annex and see that it's being run really professionally and well. And I got to tell you, when I pass by, drive by or walk by and I see children riding bikes in the parking lot there, they've got a little protected area in that parking lot. I see children riding their bikes. Those are kids that... Those are kids that either were or soon could be sleeping out of a car or in a tent or in some other precarious situation. And our government, local government does not have a strong local safety net, because traditionally, that's not been as necessary. And MACAC has stepped in and been the safety net for people and children, for dozens and dozens of them. That's a huge benefit to those people and it's a huge benefit to our community. So I'm, I'm very thankful for that. The Gloria Center is, is operational. I got to walk through when they, they had an open house a couple of weeks ago. That's very encouraging to see. One of the votes that I have maybe most proud of on city council is when I asked and encouraged and supported the city to use some of its COVID recovery funding, it's a federal recovery funding that went out to all the cities, to support the Gloria Center. And I'm going to get the numbers wrong. It was roughly half a million dollars. We spent $400,000 or $500,000 to recover Sarosis Park, which is a jewel and heart of our community. And we spent another $400,000 or $500,000 to help get the Gloria Center moving along.
Cool. So yeah, I mean, the, the, the stuff that, the things happening at the annex are really inspirational, you know? It's not just meeting the needs of houseless folk and giving them an opportunity to get off the, to get off the street, get, collaborate oneself and get back into an ability where you can go get a job. You know, it's pretty hard to turn up to a job interview without a shower or, you know, it's pretty hard to not have an address. You know, for most applications, having a dress box, it's a pretty mandatory box. And it's a pretty difficult, it's pretty difficult to navigate in the world without some of those really basic structures. And the annex are really, really helpful for providing that. But going to the folk, going to the unhoused folk and going into that, that, that conversation, we are in a cost of living crisis.
Yes.
And we are in simultaneous housing crisis. And it is a perfect storm. And we also have a city in Oregon, Grants Pass, arguing this week in the United States in precourt, that it's criminalizing the basic human function of sleep in, in public places. Here, here we are in the Dells and the city has sued the soup kitchen and criminalized taking shopping carts away from grocery stores. How do you see your role in this conversation, both as a city councillor, but also as a potential county commissioner?
Well, that's a heck of a good question and a big one. Let me, let me sort of break it down into some parts. You know, I grew up in the Dells. And of course, there are always a few folks who, for whatever reason, lived on the margin, who, who, you know, lived out of a tent or, or had some, some issues. A few. In the last 20 years, we've seen that few grow. And it's disturbing to a lot of people. It's disturbing to me for a couple of reasons. And it's hard for people, and it's hard for governments to really grasp when some fundamentals have changed, right? It's hard for people who perhaps are retired now and have a house and, and no longer have to work to understand that getting a house is much harder than it used to be. When I bought mine 21 years ago, there were plenty of houses available. And working people and young couples could scrape by and find a way to, to afford that. And that is just not the case now. It's much harder to find a house, to afford a house. The price of housing has risen faster than wages. So this fundamental human need is, is getting increasingly out of reach for more and more people. And often, you know, folks like myself, middle-class people who have a job, who have a house, who have things squared away. We see houseless folks in it and we feel like there's a failure there, or some people, you know, did something wrong, or they're, they're, they are problems. And that may be true, but it's also very true that they, we are seeing the symptoms of a system that is, that is, that is hurting, that is, that is ailing. The fundamentals of living a middle-class life have just all gotten more expensive. And it's not the last two years, or the last four years, or the last couple of years. It's the last 20 or 30 years. And we're talking about the price of housing has gotten beyond people's means. We're talking the price of going to college, if you choose that. It used to be that you could, a person could more or less work their way through college. They could work in the summers or take a part-time job and cover the cost of college. That is not feasible for most people now. Just not physically, or just not financially feasible. The numbers just don't work. Price of healthcare has gone up. Price of groceries have gone up. You put all that together and we do have an absolute harder time. People, working people have a harder time now across the board. And local government needs to be aware of that. Our, our people who are situated okay need to realize that not everybody else is doing it as well. Not everybody else has the housing or the resources that we might have taken for granted. And that's hard. It's hard to see some fundamental change as a human being. And it's hard for governments, which are obviously made up of human beings, to adapt. But that's one of, that to my mind is one of the, the critical things, I think, our new county commissioner and all of our local electeds need to be mindful of. How fundamental conditions changed now, how does the local government adapt to that? And people, some people will say, well, we can't buy everybody or build everybody a house. Very true. But there's a world of difference between we can't do anything and we can do something, and we can do something. Other local governments, other counties invest in subsidizing or assisting housing. They do in Sherman County. They do in Hood River. They're laying the grounds. They have the property. And they're putting the pieces together to build, I think it's 138-unit apartment, a set of houses. We can do something like that here. 100 or 200, you know, modestly sized, modestly priced housing units in Wasco County would make a world of difference.
Thank you. So kind of our last question here, who are your constituents?
Yeah, that's a great question. I, I encourage all of my neighbors to ask all of our electeds and candidates that question. Who are your constituents? And I could, I could say something sort of clever and politician-like and say, well, I'm running for county commissioner. So all 27,000 neighbors in Wasco County are my constituents, which would be philosophically true. They are. But it's, it's a question worth reflecting on. Our constituents are our neighbors. We talked about local government being of neighbors, by neighbors. And we really need to keep, and I really try to keep that in mind. I try to have a heart for the diversity of experience and, and backgrounds and conditions that my neighbors have. Let us find elected people who have the broadest possible definition of constituents and aren't in it for their buddies or people that think and look like them. We need to make, we need to take the extra steps and do the extra work to reach out to people that are voiceless.
That's, thank you so much, Dan. I really appreciate you coming to talk to us today. It's been a pleasure.
Absolutely.
Did we miss anything?
Oh, all sorts of things. It's a very big county. There are lots of issues. And let's not forget the fundamentals, right? What are the fun, we've talked about the sort of big picture needs, the, the, the stretch goals that we really should ask our local government to do. But the fundamentals start with keeping an eye on the budget and using our funds effectively and efficiently. Attracting and retaining good people for our staff. We have some really good staff. That's something to be thankful for and we need to continue to attract and retain there. And then just doing the fundamentals that we are, as a government, hired to do, you know? Working on road maintenance on the 600 miles of roads, right? Putting sheriff deputies out on the far-flung corners of the counties, of the county. Running the, the planning and the zoning and the courts. You know, the county has a lot of important day-to-day business and we do that well. We need to keep at it. I'm just saying, we also need to, as commissioners, stretch a little bit and see if there aren't things we can do to take on some of these big new challenges that a lot of our neighbors are facing.
Thank you so much, Dan. If folks want to speak to, see Dan in person and listen to him asking questions, they can see him at Meet the Candidates at the Mid-Colombia City Centre on April 30th.
Thank you, Robin. And people can reach out anytime through www.danforwascocounty.com.
Thanks, everyone. We'll see you soon.
Bye-bye.